I have a precedent that's already been set.
Good afternoon. We are going to start our city council work-study session for November 14th here at the Tempe History Museum. First item on agenda is a call to the audience for issue review session items. Audience members have up to three minutes to address the council. If you'd like to speak on an item, please fill out a speaker's card which can be found in the back of the history museum and please bring it forward to us and we can, we'll call your name when it's your turn. And with that, I'm going to call the speakers as I receive them. And the first one is Kim Gaffney Loza. Hope you're feeling better. Come on down. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, and I have a voice back unfortunately for you. My name is Kim Gaffney Loza and I'm from North Tempe. There were two items that were on the issue review session today that I just had some questions about. And this is not in any way reflected on our current city manager, but in the charter for the prohibitions with the council, I would, it seemed a little vague in places as far as what interaction the council could have with city staff. And because the council and mayor are those that we've elected, you know, to watch the city and to protect its assets. I'm confused. What happens if an employee comes to a council member with concerns? I know having been a manager and I could give you endless stories about different scenarios that have happened when I've been there where an employee doesn't feel comfortable talking even to any manager because they feel intimidated. And, you know, I don't know what recourse they have in that case. I've also been a union member in a large bureaucracy and I know the limitations and the delays that come in when you're working through the union and working through a bureaucracy. So it's hard sometimes on employees, you know, to find avenues where they feel comfortable to bring things, you know, to someone where their concerns are. So that was one of my concerns. The other concern is, you know, we just had an incident, and I know not everybody's going to agree with me on this, where a council member, you know, was voted off the council. A member that we actually voted to be on the council. And it didn't sit right with a lot of the citizens. And the way the charter reads, it sounds like if there was deemed to be, and I'm not sure who it would be deemed to be by, that a council member had talked to a staff member inappropriately, that they would immediately be taken off the council. And I know that wouldn't necessarily sit well with a lot of people. And who would make that decision? Would it be the council in general? Would there be discussions over it? I just don't see in that part of the charter, and it was explained to me that this happens in executive session, which of course we don't see, that there's much oversight, you know, over the general staff and some transparency, I think, that could be there. And then going along with that, I think this is great that we're going to have an audit committee. And again, this is no reflection on our current city manager, but having the city manager chair it, I'm assuming this is an ongoing committee. This is, am I out of time? Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, you can finish your spot.
Well, I just think that maybe there should be a rotating, you know, chair as opposed to always the same chair. It could be an office allow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. And just to answer your concern on, it's going to get explained when we go over this, but there's a couple ways. There's a safe haven, there's human resources, and there's also the city manager's office for employees to go to. But our city attorney, when she presents, she'll explain that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Kim, I just wanted to kind of add a comment to that. We're not changing the charter in any way. We're just having a refresher on the existing systems that we can better understand and work within it. So we're not proposing any changes or anything like that.
Yeah. And we can't change the charter without you, our residents.
That's true.
All right. Next is Liam Hamm. You're up, buddy. You got this.
What's your name? Okay. My name is Liam Hamm. I'm a junior at McClintock High School, one of our local
Well, charges. Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Last year, I had gone through a very rough time in my life. I was coming off of just a lot of things happening at my house and a lot of things like that. And it eventually got to the point where I felt like I had no one to go to. I had nothing that I felt like I could really do for myself. And I actually attempted to take my own life. And that was a very, it's a very tough experience that I obviously had to go to. And I didn't, I didn't really know what to do once I eventually tried to regain my footing. But thanks to Elizabeth Kling, my school's CARE-7 youth specialist, I was able to talk to her. I was able to really confide in her when I needed her. And through her and other people working at my school, I was like, I was able to get my schedule changed. I was able to get pretty much my entire life turned around because of these wonderful people. So, and I know that the program is going to be talked about today, but I just wanted to get my experience out there because it means a lot to me, what these people are doing for not just myself, but all these other people that are on the, that are students in our committees and our communities. And yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you, Liam. And thank you for your courage. All right. Next, Elizabeth Holman.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Holman, and I'm currently a sophomore at Tempe Preparatory Academy. So what I want to talk about today is the initiative that's on the agenda, talking about the Dolores Huerta Day of Service. Now, when council member Kivi presented me, came to me with her idea about the Day of Service, I at first didn't, I at first didn't know who Dolores Huerta was. And I think that needs to be something that's changed in our community. Because Dolores Huerta really is, if, if, like me, some of you don't know who she was, she was an instrumental labor activist and an instrumental leader in the Chicano, Chicana civil rights movement. And she organized the labor strikes and for immigrant farm workers in the southwest that allowed them to be able to get benefits and be able to get healthcare rights and that limited pesticide use in the farms that we have today. And, and I wanted to go over some of the ways that we see her activism impact our daily lives in that because Arizona has over 100,000 farm workers in our, in our community, and because of the ways that she allowed them to, because of the ways that she gave them their, their working benefits, that we, that we have seen these benefits in our own communities. And I've reached out to a couple of, I've reached out to a couple of high schoolers right in my region, and those includes, those include Gillian Dodson, who is a 17-year-old senior at Gilbert Classical Academy. And she gave me permission to speak for her today. And she told me about how Dolores Huerta's incredible role as a Latino woman in her roles in the, in the, in the farm workers movement has inspired her in her own activism where, because she is the lead activist for the youth climate strike that we're seeing in Tempe, she has, she has through Dolores Huerta's legacy been inspired by that. And, and Dujia Kumar, who is a 16-year-old junior, also talked to me. And as the organizer for the Arizona Period Day Rally that went, happened in the past few weeks, she talked to me about how important it was that Dolores Huerta was recognized for her service as an activist and how important her role at the front of that movement was. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Cindy McCabe.
Hi, my name's Cynthia McCabe, and I'm here to thank all of you for letting the youth specialists go to Compadre High School Academy. I'm a guardian of a 15-year-old Native American girl that I've raised for seven years. And she has terrible, terrible panic attacks, anxiety, depression, and she's even tried to take her life. And she was, I, we were had her homeschooled for two years, but she wanted to go to high school. She was trying to be like everybody else. And she went to Compadre, and of course, she was terrified and nervous. And she met a couple of the specialists, and they just really welcomed her, took her under their wings. And she, the first day, I thought, oh, this will be, she'll be coming home and say, I'm not going back. But she felt good about the specialists, and they talked to her, they played games with her, they introduced her to other kids. And she's still having a few problems, but she's so much better. And I really appreciate the council for letting the youth specialists go there. I worked for 27 years with youth and senior citizens, and I know these kids, there's, it's not like it was when I was working. There, there are so many crises. There's so, so many that are in trouble that need help so much. So I really appreciate the specialists.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for coming. Next is Rebecca Hinton.
Hello, council members. I think Tempe, my name is Rebecca Hinton. I'm a Tempe resident. I speak on behalf of myself and my family in support of Elizabeth Huerta Day. I think Elizabeth from Tempe Prep laid out great reasons why we need this. And I particularly want to say I appreciate the tying in a scholarship and a recognition with this day too. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Isela Blanc.
Hello, thank you, Isela Blanc, a Tempe resident. Actually, as I was listening to the youth talk about the specialists, I think it's really important, first and foremost, I want to apologize on the state legislator's behalf for not properly funding all the necessary resources. And so thank you for providing the additional funding that schools' support services need, number one. But I'm also here to talk about Dolores Huerta. I think it was beautifully said, when a lot of our students are unaware of this amazing human being that actually is from Arizona, continues to come to Arizona to advocate for basic things like worker rights across the board. It would be an honor and a privilege if we were one of the first cities to acknowledge, I believe, and I could be wrong and somebody can correct me, to acknowledge her. I do want to advise you that also at the state ledge, we are going to be introducing a Dolores Huerta Day because it is important that we start acknowledging and recognizing everyone that has improved outcomes across the United States and in places like Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone, I'll send the audience wishing to address us on any of the items listed on this agenda. Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And if it's okay with the council, I am going to move item D up because I understand we may have a council member leave early. We want to make sure that we have the entire council present for this. So I asked Judy if you can come forward. And we're going to take the Tempe City Charter Prohibitions first. And, you know, as we've heard a comment earlier, and I know this is just a good reminder for all the council and staff, as well as the public, to better understand our charter, our rules and the regulations that we do follow. So, and we have Judy Baumann, our city attorney.
Thank you, member, members of the council, mayor, Judy Baumann, your city attorney. Council members have requested a presentation on the prohibitions that are listed in the Tempe City Charter concerning interference with administration and appointments and removals. The Tempe City Charter prohibits council as a body and council members individually from interfering with administration of the city. This includes directly or indirectly requesting staff to work on specific projects outside of the authorization of a consensus of the council or a working group. This would also include giving orders to staff or attempting to direct their hiring, firing, or promotional opportunities. And as a, as a member of the public pointed out, and thank you for that, it, it has been part of our charter since the 1960s, and it does not necessarily address every potential situation. So periodically we come before the council and try to give some updates and some guidance around some of these things. So Tempe is organized as a council manager form of government. The city charter vests the council with policymaking and other powers of this, of the city. The city manager is vested with the authority for the administration and operations of the city. And that is typical. We looked at about seven different cities in Arizona, and that is all fairly common. And they have very common verbiage. Again, not a lot of specific guidance, but a lot of the same types of verbiage. Let me go ahead and, let me go ahead and get to the charter prohibitions themselves. Neither the council nor its members shall dictate appointment or removal of city administrative officers or employees. That's Section 205B. And then, except for inquiries or authorized investigations, the council or its members are to deal with city officers or employees solely through the city manager. And the council nor its members are to give orders to employees, which is typically known as directing staff. That is also Section 205. In Tempe, we really do have quite a few different ways to deal with issues that staff may feel uncomfortable bringing forward to their direct supervisors, understandably. In the event that staff and council members are interacting, one of the ways that they can guard against inadvertent or the appearance of these types of council or charter prohibitions would be to refer staff who present concerns to human resources, to internal audit, which allows for anonymous reporting, which may be helpful. A safe haven, if it involves allegations of discrimination or otherwise fits the criteria, to their various bargaining groups, to the city manager's office, or to the city attorney's office. So in Tempe, we have various ways built in for staff to deal with or raise issues if they're uncomfortable dealing with their direct supervisor. Now, part of the workarounds, if you will, with these prohibitions is that council or council aides may ask staff what the city is currently doing on a topic to get answers to know whether or not to form a working group or to see what actually is going on in the city. It is helpful to have the director aware of what their staff is working on, which I think is part of the underlying policy decision for these charter prohibitions. Council aides, as set forth in the Rules of Council Procedure, Rule 7, are to gather information and find out what the council may need to do to form a working group. One of the ways that staff guards against these inadvertent appearances of violations of a charter is by adhering to the Rule of Seven, where we try to give information to all seven of you at the same time since you operate as a board. Also, you have the ability under your Rules of Council Procedure to form working groups. Those working groups are authorized by a consensus of the council, and it's with the city manager who authorizes the council or certain council members the ability to work with staff up to a certain number of hours. And then after those hours are filled, you all come back in an open meeting, get updates, authorize continued work. So I hope that addresses most of the issues. The prohibition for violations of the city, of the city charter prohibitions is forfeiture of office. This is in Section 206. And that's true of violation of any express prohibition of the charter, not just these. So with that, I would ask if anyone has questions?
Councilmember Adams?
Thanks. Judy, it's my understanding, though, in each sessions, we can bring up all of our concerns because everyone's there. If we'd have any concerns about department heads or whomever it might be?
Yes, it would be my recommendation for if a council member has an issue or a concern to raise, that they bring it back to the entirety of the council so that a consensus of the council can be given if there's any direction or any additional work that needs to be undertaken based upon that concern. Thank you.
And then, I guess, one thing I, I noticed is, it says individual, individual council members, as well as council acting as a war, are prohibited from giving orders to any officer or employee. No exception is made in the charter from these prohibitions for the city manager, council aides, mayor, or council chief of staff or direct reports. So how are we supposed to, if we have concerns with our city manager, for example, how are we supposed to bring that up when it looks like we're, we can't talk to him about these orders? We can't do orders?
Well, I think you can certainly always talk with any one of your direct appointees. The direct appointees include the judge, they include myself, a city attorney, they include the city clerk, and the city manager. And certainly, we report directly to you, and any one of you can talk with us about concerns that you may have. Giving orders to staff, I think, is what the prohibition is, is included for. And I think when you look specifically at the language of the prohibition, the orders would need to come from a consensus of the council, and that would be done by at least having a majority, a majority of you, and then you can express your concerns to one of the direct.
And once again, we could bring those things up in each session safely.
And certainly, you know, I have to say too, obviously, you work with your council aides and you work with them very closely. And I don't believe that the policy of a charter prohibition in this instance means that they cannot help you with providing information and scheduling and all those types of things that you would require just to get your daily work done.
It also says about, I know that we've always, it seems like since I've been elected, that we could talk to the development or department directors. But then, in this, it says, it's better practice is just to go through the city manager's office, mayor, council, chief of staff. So would it be your recommendation that we no longer contact our directors if we have concerns and just, just contact Andrew?
I think the guidance that we have provided in the past and that I would, I would still adhere to today would be, if you have a question, if you need information, again, to find out what the city might be working on or to find out where you're at in a given program. For example, the Tempe Works Program came out of a working group and they were authorized, certain members of the council were authorized to work with staff. If staff was to provide an update, that would be appropriate. I think it's always the safest practice for you all to, if you're asking a question of a department director, to go ahead and CC a member of the city manager's office. Just think that could not hurt and it's probably helpful.
And my last concern is, is, you know, this could be a popularity contest. I mean, if somebody said that, you know, you gave a directive and, and, you know, it could end up being a popularity contest.
Well, I'm happy to report it has not been used that way in the past, and I would hope it would not be used that way in the present. One of the members of the public, and I appreciate you weighing in on this, asked about the process. Should a complaint actually be received? I think we would look at the Code of Conduct to govern an investigation. And so going through an investigative, investigative process would lead you to that portion of the Code of Conduct, which asks if the investigation that's brought back to the council actually reveals something that we think would be actionable, then we would look to whether or not it would be considered to be a charter violation or not. As you know, we have had Code of Conduct investigations in the past. They have not resulted in charter violation.
Yes, Vice Mayor Kiwi.
So many of us have council member events, and we get questions, detailed questions from our residents. And the best practice is to turn that over to our overworked council aide or overworked chief, council chief of staff and, and ask them to follow up with those individual concerns or complaints from residents.
I don't know that it necessarily would be turned over wholly to the council aide. You can always ask for their assistance in checking with the department director to find out what the city's doing. I don't expect that the council aide would have all that information at the ready either.
Right, right. Well, if it's a form of a question, you can always ask for a question. But if it's, if the light burned out.
Right, right, exactly. I think those are things that we would want to know about and are important to be brought forward. I think it's more of a, you know, a council member, if, if a council member contacts a line-level member of staff, for example, and asks for a project to be initiated, what gives an order for work to be done, necessarily just because of the balance of power, I think a staff member would most often drop whatever they're working on and tackle what it is that the council member or council aide asked of them. And it just creates some issues then if the department director in the city manager's office is unaware that they may be able to get their daily work completed.
Okay. Councilmember Adams?
I just have one more question. And that is, as far as our direct reports, I guess, how are we supposed to hold our direct reports accountable if we can't give orders or, I mean, orders to me, it seems like it could be vague. I mean, that could be a coaching session. I mean, it could be interpreted in a lot of different ways. So that's, that's my real concern, or one of my concerns with this.
Thank you, council members. So I think the, probably the best way to handle that would be to bring that to the rest of your colleagues in an executive session so that you can find out whether or not there is consensus to approach one of the direct reports if there's a true concern. You can certainly talk with each one of us, and we provide those opportunities by way of a council appointee update in executive session.
Anybody else have any questions? I just want to reiterate, thank you, Judy, for refreshing us and so the public understands. We do have a charter. It's online. It's on a webpage. It tells you what we can and can't do. And then also, you know, we have several different ways, as you mentioned, and I know as one of our residents brought up, about how, you know, if you have any type of concerns with the city administration from the employees, that we do have safe havens that they could go to. I'm just reiterating, our human resources department, as well as visiting our city manager, Andrew Tring, during his office hours. There's also ways that the city has put forth our employees for them so they can remain accountable to all of our employees if they do have concerns. So there is vehicles and options for them. And there's a process. Instead of coming to a council member, if a line item employee comes to a council member, it's important that they have those options out there for everybody. And for us, and to talk about a question that was asked by Councilmember Adams, if there's any concerns with our directory hires, our direct reports, everybody knows, is Judy, she's our city attorney, we hire our city attorney, our city manager, our presiding judge, as well as our city clerk. Those are the four officers that the city council has, you know, oversight for that. And we have evaluations that we do on a yearly basis with our direct reports. So they come to us, just like our employees have evaluations within our department. So this is some of the, and if there's anything that comes up in between, that's, as Councilmember Adams pointed out, we bring it up at an executive session, and we have those conversations and we conduct it. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Judy. This was very helpful. Just as an example, I had an issue this week where I was contacted by a resident who was upset with a social media post the city put out. And I didn't like the post either, truth be told. And my first inclination was to call, you know, the communications team and ask them what's going on here. But I spoke to the city manager first, and he was able to review the direction the council had given, and they corrected it. So, you know, it's just even when you've been on council for years and years, still, I guess, the natural inclination is you have these relationships with people, you want to give them a call and say, hey, I don't like A, B, and C. But really, you know, the charter prohibits us from doing that. So I'm very pleased on this presentation, just kind of as a refresher to us. And, you know, just only, you know, specifically because I just had experience like that working through the system, set up to get that kind of stuff handled through the city manager's office. So I thought this was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good reminder for staff and for council members. So thank you.
And also, a charter, for those that don't know, our charter is voted upon when the city was first, you know, created by the voters. It's our constitution. And there's 91 cities and towns throughout the state of Arizona, and there's only 16 charter cities, which means we can create our own rules and regulations as opposed to if you're just a town. If you're not a charter city, you're beholden to the state. Even though we're If you're not a charter city, you're beholden to the state, even though we're beholden to the state and we need help with that sometimes, but I would tell you, being a charter city is advantageous for us, and we cannot change the charter, our constitution, our city constitution, if you will, without the will of the voters and the residents of Tempe. So even if we want, we'd have to do a charter amendment, we would have to go to the voters to get information, you know, explain why or why not you want to do X, Y, and Z. So that's, so everybody knows. It's our city charter, it's online, is our, basically our constitution, if you will, for the city. I hope that's helpful. Okay? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to take our state legislative principles. Marge Zilla?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Marge Zilla, government relations officer for the city. In item 2A, you'll find for your review, Tempe State Legislative Principles for 2020. The principles will be the basis of Tempe's positions during the upcoming legislative session, and that starts on January 13th. The principles are arranged in the general categories and include the overarching policies of preserving local decision-making and preserving local resources. Those are followed by bullets that address more specific topics, and those include supporting human services resources, resources for municipal economic development, as well as transportation and infrastructure funding, and integrating the municipal perspective into water management decisions. It also includes considering support for issues that would benefit our partners, and those would include other municipalities or other entities. I also wanted to note that, as it states in the memo, staff will be continually seeking direction from council throughout the session and updating council on the status of legislation that could impact Tempe. After the legislative principles attachment, you'll find the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Municipal Policy Statement Draft for your reference, and council will be updated as any of these issues move forward. And I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Marge. You know, it's always necessary and important to renew or review the council, the goals that we have as a reminder of what our priorities are that we respond with our residents as the legislative session is upon us, starting in January. And as the government body that really is closest to the people, it's important, I can't stress this enough, how important local control is. Believe it or not, there's a lot of stuff that happens that kind of is out of our control, and we need our residents' help more than often when it comes to local control issues. I can't stress that enough. Also during, you know, we get preempted a lot by the state legislature. That goes back to the local control issue, and it's so important that we preserve our existing revenue stream because oftentimes there are some pieces of legislation that do get introduced at the legislature that really takes away and messes with our revenue structure when we have a budget, and I can't stress that enough. Just one item in particular is a highway user fees. That's just one. There's multiple items that get introduced, we're always trying to defend local control, and as you guys email us as a council on certain issues, it's important that you also look at the legislative body and who your representatives are, and I wanted, we have one in the audience today, tonight, and it's so important. We do encourage a resident to be involved with Neighborhood Day now at the state capitol. It's so important, and we also have a legislative breakfast that the council has with our state legislators to go over our priorities, and we also want to hear what their priorities are so, because we need to work together as a team, and that's why we have that communication and that open line. So, Marge, thank you so much for what you do. I'm sure she's going to be busy this upcoming legislative session. We'll see, maybe not too crazy because it's an election year, but you never know. Anybody have any questions for Marge? Yes, Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Sure, and thank you so much, Marge. I noticed under the area of local operations and human services resources, you list supporting our human services needs, including affordable housing funding and drug misuse, dah dah dah. I wonder whether under the category fiscal policy revenues and taxes, we could mention the Housing Trust Fund, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I know that we, there was some success last year in restoring some of that funding which had been rated to pay, I think, for state police funding, and I want to thank State Representative Isla Blanc in the back there for her work in trying to replenish that fund, and there was actually a huge step taken last year. $15 million was placed in that fund, and it was distributed actually to a lot of the rural legislators. Glad someone got use of it, or other cities and towns got use of it, but $51 million is the sort of the amount to be restored, and there seems to be an increasing push for that, and I was wondering if there's a spot under fiscal policy revenues and taxes where we can call for the restoration of the Housing Trust Fund.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if it's the pleasure of council, we can excerpt that affordable housing funding piece from local operations and then move that to fiscal policy, if it's the pleasure of council.
Yeah, that's fine.
That does seem more appropriate there. Thank you for everyone who agrees.
Everybody okay? All right. All right, thank you, Marge.
Thank you.
All right, next is our Tempe Human Services Youth Specialist Program. We have Chris Charlo, we have Elizabeth Kling, we have Naomi, thank you so much.
He's in the middle.
We have everybody here. And again, thank you to the youth that came up and spoke prior to this.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Naomi Farrell, Director of Human Services. Presenting with me today are Chris Charlo, Human Services Manager, Overcare 7, and Elizabeth Kling, Youth Specialist, serving McClintock High. I would also like to acknowledge our Tempe Union High School partners, Dr. Kevin Mendeville, Superintendent, Sean McDonald, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Marin, Coordinator of Social and Emotional Wellness, and Diane Muehlmann, Assistant Superintendent, Business Services. I also wanted to take the time to acknowledge and thank our youth specialists who sit to my left, as well as Sergeant Joey Burdock, who oversees our SROs. Our SROs are very, play a very important role in the Youth Specialist Program. During the September 12 regular council meeting, mayor and council requested an update on the City of Tempe Human Services Youth Specialist Program. This program has over 25 years of history with the City of Tempe and the Tempe Union High School District. While its capacity to serve our youth has changed over time, its core purpose has remained the same, to meet the social and emotional needs of our youth. This presentation will cover the community's need of social and emotional support for our youth and an overview of the purpose and history of the Youth Specialist Program. This will include our presentation of the documented positive impact of the program and opportunities to strengthen it. The Youth Specialist Program specifically accelerates these four council performance measures. Under Council Priority Quality of Life, you have 3.37 mental health and wellness, 3.08 achieve a high school graduation rate of Tempe students who graduate in four years greater than or equal to the statewide goal of 90% by 2030. 3.09 achieve a rate of 65% for Tempe residents who have a post-secondary certificate, two-year degree, or four-year degree by 2030. Under Council Priority Safe and Secure Communities, 1.21 achieve rates of zero for alcohol and marijuana use by 10th and 12th grade students in Tempe as measured by the Biannual Arizona Youth Survey. This program works in concert with the broader portfolio of Tempe Human Services education-related programs. Aligning our social and emotional support services and programs maximizes learning opportunities for youth and better prepares them to be more productive members of our community. Chris Charlo is going to present on the need in our community for this type of program.
Thank you. Good afternoon. To understand the need for this program and how it is delivered in the school setting, it helps to better understand the problem. Many of the children in our community who are suffering have experienced adverse childhood experiences that caused them to experience high levels of stress and decreased readiness for learning. The resulting behaviors are felt in classrooms across the state. So what are adverse childhood experiences and how do they impact the lives of our children? The Center for Disease Control defines them as potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood, which is defined as 0 through 17, such as experiencing violence, abuse, or neglect, witnessing violence in the home, and having a family member attempt or die by suicide. ACEs also include aspects of the child's environment that can undermine their sense of safety, stability, and bonding, such as growing up in a household with substance misuse, mental health problems, or instability due to parental separation or incarceration of a parent, sibling, or other member of the household. ACEs have been linked to risky health behaviors, chronic health conditions, low life potential, and early death. We also know that the cumulative effect of multiple ACEs is staggering. Early adversity has lasting effects. However, children's positive experiences or protective factors, such as one stable adult, can prevent children from experiencing adversity and can protect against many of the negative health and life outcomes even after the adversity has occurred. Understanding the social determinants of health in our community is important when resourcing areas where we can improve the environments of our children. Prevention is possible and intervention is necessary. The next slide shows the importance of providing both of these. From a national perspective, many states have children with significant childhood trauma. However, the National Survey of Children's Health shows that Arizona leads the country with the number of children with an ACE score of two or more. In fact, over 70,000 children in Arizona have an ACE score of five or more and could fill the entire State Farm Stadium. What contributes to ACE scores being so high in Arizona? Arizona is the fourth fastest-growing state in the country. People are moving here from their home states, oftentimes leaving their family support systems behind. Arizona is last in the nation for school funding. Schools must make the choice between teachers and supportive behavioral health staff. The lack of mental health providers and social emotional supports leaves teachers feeling stressed and ill-equipped to address student behaviors in the classroom, which is disruptive for all the students. Unemployment, economic and neighborhood instability, food and housing insecurity are all important social determinants of health in addition to ACE scores that impact our children's environment and lives. Mental health outcomes are largely affected by these adverse experiences. One in five teenagers will have a serious mental illness. Only 20% of young people with mental health challenges receive services. Once there is an onset of symptoms, it takes an average of eight to 10 years for an intervention to occur, and 50% of students age 14 and older with a mental illness drop out of high school. Rates of anxiety and depression are at crisis levels in the United States, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people between the ages of 10 and 24. Being a young adult is difficult, but the transition from middle school to high school is a particularly difficult time for adolescents. Arizona has the second-highest rate of mental illness, of youth mental illness in the country, and yet we have the lowest levels of access to care. The Arizona Youth Survey, conducted by the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, every two years, it happens every two years, and measures the experiences of eighth, 10th, and 12th graders in Arizona. The 2016 data tells us that many of our students are coming to school with brains and bodies wired for survival instead of being prepared for learning. They are turning to a variety of risky behaviors to feel good, to deal with stress, and to avoid being sad. Some examples of these maladaptive behaviors include substance abuse, self-harm, promiscuity, and abusive relationships. Decades of research shows us that unaddressed and untreated toxic stress leads to poor health and social function long after children leave the school environment. The results affect us throughout our lifespan. If we look at the three most prevalent experiences reported by Arizona youth on this slide, we can see that 25% of 10th graders report living with an alcoholic, over 42% report that their parents are separated or divorced, and almost 56% report that they live with an adult who insults them or puts them down. These are not uncommon experiences, however, we all underestimate how severely they impact our children. This highlights the importance of providing prevention and early intervention for our youth, helping students develop healthy coping mechanisms, build the resilience they need to overcome adversity and have productive lives. At the local level, our youth are telling us the importance of access to supportive services. The 2018 Mayor's Youth Advisory Council Youth Town Hall Report recommends increased mental health services in schools to help support students dealing with overwhelming stress and reduce the stigma and shame around accessing mental health support services. Students specifically ask for more mental health resources at school, for awareness campaigns, and improved education for both teachers and parents. The youth specialists with the supportive and extensive human services network of programs are able to address these recommendations. But even before we understood the impact of ACEs on the children in our community, we realized the importance of providing them with supportive services. The Youth Specialist Program has been embedded in the school district for 25 years. Represented by orange in this graph, which, trust me, it's on the left, orange on the left, the Tobacco, Alcohol, and Other Drug Grant provided prevention funding to support these services for 16 of the 25 years of this program. When that grant was eliminated in 2010, Tempe Community Council stepped in to provide funding through the Community and Schools Program, which is shown in green, which we can see. Until the 2016-2017 school year, these services were offered only 12 hours per week at each school in the district. It was during that year, 2016-2017 school year, that several critical incidents occurred in the district, including student suicides, that led to an expansion of services at Corona del Sol, resulting in 24 hours of services each week. Ultimately, increased needs at all the schools led to the current program structure of 35 hours each week at each of the high schools. Funding by the district, the Tempe Union High School District, is shown in red, which is on the right. For the last two years, the district was able to identify non-sustainable funding to continue this program. As we strive to meet the needs of the students, we know that adjusting the current service model will increase the program outcomes. The ultimate goal is to support the students year-round with intensive case management during the summer months, when the safe and supportive school environment is not available to them. The youth specialists would conduct regular home visits, develop volunteer opportunities for students, and lead at group activities for those students who are most at risk. By engaging students over the summer breaks, we have the opportunity to help them remain positive and hopeful until they can return to their schools. The youth specialists would also use summer months to focus on assisting 8th graders with the transition to high school, thus decreasing their stress and anxiety about being in 9th grade. The chart I included on this slide shows the current program model along with two alternative models. While the 36-week model would help improve staff retention, it would not result in a significant increase in positive program outcomes since there would be no additional days of engagement with students. The 52-week model provides maximum opportunity for the youth specialists to engage with the students in a consistent manner, positively impacting program outcomes and student success.
Hang on one second.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt. I have to run, but I know that you're going to ask for consensus, so I just wanted to get my preference out there before I had to go. You know, it's my, it's my preference, of course, that, you know, I firmly believe that we have to support these young men and women. I was on the Youth Suicide Prevention Working Group, I know that you were a part of as well. You know, it's important that we pay these, these experts what they're worth, and it's important that our students have year-round access to them. So my preference for the matters of consensus that I won't be here for the ultimate discussion is the 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year option that you have just laid out. So sorry I have to run, but that's what I would like to see happen.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Yep.
So the youth have also told us how they prefer to be served, and it's our responsibility to listen to them. Students are 21 times more likely to visit a mental health provider at their school than at an outside service provider. Some of the reasons for this include the complexities of transportation, the shame of asking for help, deviating from accepted cultural norms, the generational nature of family trauma, and financial hardships. The Youth Specialist Program provides students access to a stable, trusted, nurturing adult in a safe and neutral setting to help students overcome these challenges. Into Integrating important social and emotional supports into a normal school setting is a loud response to the voices of our children's requests. There are currently youth specialists working in each of the seven high schools in the district. Although the academic school year includes 36 weeks of staring instruction and up to four weeks of summer school, the youth specialists provide services during 32 of those weeks. They are at each of the schools seven hours a day for a total of 35 hours per week excluding holidays and school breaks. These temporary city of Tempe positions unfortunately do not include paid holidays nor do they include pay during fall, winter and spring breaks. While this staffing model helps to keep the cost of the program down, it results in high turnover of personnel, who cite a lack of benefits as the primary reason for leaving. Students are referred to the youth specialists from a variety of on-campus sources such as teachers, administrators, nurses, school support staff and our partners, the school resource officers. The youth specialists engage students individually and in group settings while working with the team at each campus to help the student be successful. However, demand from students and staff continues to increase. This program consistently shows results and is widely supported by our school partners in Tempe Union. As discussed previously during the presentation, we know the need for support for students is occurring much earlier than when they enter high school. For this reason, we implemented a program in four of our Tempe middle schools to address the anxiety that comes with impending change. Intuitively, we understand that the earlier supportive programming is provided, the better. But the goal is to collect data to confirm these beliefs and inform policy and programming decisions for the future. And the four middle schools that we're currently in are Connolly, Gilliland, Kyrene Middle School and Fees College Preparatory School. The services are provided by four masters-level interns who are supervised by Maria Gonzalez, the supervisor of the specialist program. They are at the school 16 hours a week during the whole school year and there's no cost associated with these services. As many of us know, calculating the impact of human services is not an easy science. To address this challenge, the youth specialist program uses the Colorado Trust Toolkit for evaluating positive youth development. Specifically, this toolkit allows the program to track student growth in each of these four areas: life skills, positive life choices, positive core values and sense of self. Evidence shows that improving student outcomes in these quadrants leads to better decision-making and greater resilience for our students. School-based social and emotional support services like the youth specialist program improve school attendance, academic success, graduation rates, and they improve school climate and increase school safety. Elizabeth is now going to give us a firsthand account of the work she does with the student center in Tempe.
So, this slide is just a snapshot of some of the services available to students. We primarily provide the stability of an adult who listens without judgment and validates their experiences, concerns and strengths. Youth specialists are trained to integrate with other school staff, SROs and support programs. By providing intervention services on each campus, we reduce the need for the CARE7 crisis band to respond to students in crisis. The youth specialists are able to divert the situation and provide solutions to staff and parents. Our role is expansive. We provide a culture of wellness by engaging students when not in crisis. We also provide personalized services and support groups using the One Circle Foundation's evidence-based curriculum. We see students worrying about basic needs, like where am I going to sleep tonight? Am I going to eat dinner? Am I going to be safe when I leave school? We also see students worrying about everything from their grades to unhealthy relationships to grieving the loss of a loved one and even wanting to harm themselves and others. One example of a district-wide initiative is the Sandy Hook Promise, which strives to reduce violence on campus by building a stronger, more connected classroom, school and community. The implementation of Sandy Hook Promise is one way to address the anxiety expressed by students feeling unsafe in school, as reported by students in the Arizona Youth A new tracking system and database have increased the program's ability to capture valuable data. The data collected during the 2018-19 school year is reported at the end of each semester and presented as the Fall Report and then again as the Spring Report. Both of these reports are available for your review and were attached to the memo sent to council prior to this presentation. Some of the most significant data shows that anxiety and depression are the main reasons students are referred to the youth specialist for assistance. We also know, out of the 1,381 students who saw services during the 18-19 school year, approximately 575 saw the youth specialist only once, while almost 250 students visited them more than 10 times. One data point is very clear. The number of students seen so far this year has increased by 66% during the first quarter. These numbers do not include prevention services such as classroom presentations or Sandy Hook activities. This is good news. More students are aware of the support available at their campus and they're willing to talk about their problems. The bad news is there are more students with problems.
Elizabeth, hang on one second. Councilmember Adams?
I just have a question. You said that it increased 66%?
Yes, the number of students we saw the first quarter of last year is up 66% the first quarter of this year.
Okay, and do you have any reasons for that?
I think it's the consistency of the program. This is the second year that we're there. We're established. The teachers, the support people know we're there. The students that we connected with last year are talking to each other. They're saying, "There's somebody there. You can go talk to somebody."
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Likewise, the early data collected by the middle school youth specialist indicates the students and staff are already taking advantage of the services. Even though the Arizona Youth Survey shows us that eighth graders are suffering, it is always shocking to engage with young students who are expressing suicidal thoughts. Unfortunately, this crisis is our reality. Thankfully, our school and city leaders understand the critical nature of the problem and the value of the solution. So, we've presented to you tonight a lot of information, a lot of data and a lot of facts, but I think the most important thing that I want to leave you with is the voice of the children. So, it's a little bit hard to see this picture that's on the right, but this was given to me anonymously at this time of year last year by a student who was doing a gratitude exercise in class. So, it says, "Mrs. Kling, thank you for being so kind and caring," which is sweet, but if you look at the hand, the fingers, it says, "Thank you for saving my life." Students have also told us, "I can talk about anything and there will be support. The youth specialists help me feel more cared about." It lets me know that there is someone in this school who actually cares about the kids and can help those kids through traumatic experiences. They say, "I love bonding with everyone in the group and I love not feeling alone."
Thank you for the opportunity to present on the youth specialist programs. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I got to tell you, I really want to thank you guys. I want to thank our staff who is out there every day. I think you're doing this incredible work because I think you know that Tempe is a very caring community and we can't do this by ourselves. And I want to thank Dr. Menneville, the school administrators, our teachers, everyone within our, all three school districts within Tempe. Thank you for what you guys do and the partnership that we have because without that partnership, we would not be able to do the things that we currently do now. And Tempe is known as that caring compassionate community. And I have to say, this hits home because as a father of two daughters, the incident you talked about in 16, 15, that hit my family. My daughter, you know, I'm a father of two girls. They went to Corona. One still is at Corona and they experienced some interesting challenges with that.
Yep.
And it's so important that we're getting this update today and I can't stress enough in, actually something the same things happened with my daughter when she was in middle school. And I know Diane knows that too. And I would tell you, it's real and I can't thank you guys enough for what you're doing. I see that we have alternative programs for the high schools and I appreciate, and you gave some great statistics, especially in the middle schools. I didn't see any alternatives or is there, it may not be complete yet for middle schools because I know Councilmember Arredondo and I are on a committee with Councilmember Adams, Mental Health Committee. One of the things that we're looking at is also making sure we're involved at the middle school level too before they get to high school because my daughter was in sixth grade and something happened. It was pretty traumatic and I can't stress enough how important this is. It's a good conversation. So, I know there's going to be a lot of needs and we have this council and we're lucky that we are a successful city in terms of making sure we have available resources, but with those resources, we're going to have to make some tough budget decisions and this is something that's going to weigh heavily on us when we go through our budget process that's coming up. So, your timing is perfect. Thank you for, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, for mentioning this, to bring it back to us so we understand the full extent of it. And I think it's real. These are real stories that we're hearing and thank you to our staff. And the fact that these schools counselors can work with our CARE7 staff outside of, you know, the home, I think is really tremendous. I know Councilmember Arredondo, then Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to really try to hold it together because I have to tell you, this is kind of a program that is really near and dear to my heart and I can't even express how much appreciation and gratitude and how valuable each and every one of you are for what you've been able to do in the short amount of time that this program has been in the model that it is right now. And so, thank you so much for that and the impact, that positive impact that you are having on our youth, on their families, on our community as a whole, it's unmeasurable and I just can't say thank you enough for that. And to Tempe Union for your continued partnership for what you do, for being able to hold this together in the way it was for the last two years. Thank you so much for that. And I would say that we know it's not sustainable the way it is. We're asking master-level professionals to work for $28,000 a year and that's not acceptable. That is not acceptable in my book and I think that I hope as we move forward that we are able to create some sustainability, some consistency. I think like Mrs. Kling mentioned, being able to grow that program, to be able to have that presence on the campus in a consistent way. When I had an opportunity to visit, I just want to say thank you to those youth specialists that, you know, welcomed me. Thank you to Maria for driving me around and just really understanding and getting a true experience of what you all do every single day and the lives that you're touching and you're impacting. And I get it because you're not doing it alone either. You've got a team of other people that are working right there, right next to you with their school resource officers. So, I just want to give a shout out to our police chief and their team. Thank you guys so much for what you do. I mean, that's just been an incredible partnership to the staff that's on campus, the teachers, the administrators. I mean, it really does take a partnership, a true, true team to be able to reach these kids, but it is those youth specialists that are really doing the heavy lifting. And I saw it and I see it and I'm grateful for it. And I would 100%, this is a high, high priority for me. I would absolutely support the 40-hour work week that is all year long. I would love to be able to partner with Tempe Union and to make that happen, to create some type of a three-year commitment so everybody feels some type of security. Maybe it's a 50-50 split or whatever that may be down the road, but for me, this is something that is valuable. It is so valuable to this community. I mean, you really have a captive audience of a lot of wonderful kids in this community that are struggling and to have somebody there that they can reach out to is something I wish maybe even my own children had that opportunity and maybe would have made a difference in so many others' lives. So, I am all in. I can't tell you how much I am all in. You probably already know that anyway and I'm looking forward to the work that we're going to continue to do in our mental health working group with the mayor and with Jennifer Adams and she understands it too. I mean, having that counseling background, Councilmember Adams, I know, you know how important it is to be able to make those relationships and build those connections with individuals because sometimes it takes more than once. And I will tell you, Mrs. Kling did a really great job of presenting, but at the same time, I know how much it impacts her. I heard it from you guys firsthand, how much you truly, truly care and how much compassion that you have for these kids and I just want to say I'm really grateful. And whatever it takes to ever make this happen, to make it a permanent thing within our community, let's make it happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, thank you guys for bringing this information up because it's captivated. It's staggering, really it is. And these are one of the things that, you know, you know, being part of EMS in my job over there and going through the CR vans and mental health and the things that they do and the services that they provide day in, day out and the costs that go along with it as adults and getting older and older and the continuation of that, hands down, 100%. If I'm going to put my money on something, it's going to be on a programs like this because that's going to help curtail the disaster or anything else down the road. And that's the smart way we do things, you know, this city should. And we should look at creative ideas. Here's the thing that was mentioned and I do agree. Pay for our counselors. Pay for the people that actually went and got through programs in schooling and pay them for what they're worth because that's key because that's going to help a program in my opinion. And the fact is this, is the city needs this stuff up because it's part of public safety. It's part of PD, it's part of fire and it goes, wraps around. And that is the investment that we have to have in our community. And you know what? That's an investment that we have within Tempe that says, that speaks volumes to the people that want to come to Tempe, to develop in Tempe, that want at their office here in Tempe because we do pre-K, because we do these things that makes sense. This is logical sense and we can easily say, "The outcomes are going to be this as opposed to this." And that's a great benefit. So, I am, give me the gold, you know, give me the top, you know? That's where I'm at on this stuff because I see it, I'm around it. It's frustrating and this is one way where I think we can really make a difference. And I have to tell you, the partnerships with the schools, the partnerships with our community and then we have partnership with the gaming grants. I'm not saying gaming grants alone is going to cover this. No, no, no. Gaming grants is going to help. The city's going to step up and we're going to get other resources step up. And the biggest thing is we're going to do it right. If we do this thing, we're going to do it right. And you got my promise on that. And if we, however we get there, it's going to get there. So, thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes. First of all, thank you to everyone that's working so hard and out in the streets and out in the school systems, you know, saving lives. That's what I think that people really need to recognize is that you are saving lives every time you help that child and instead of a lifetime of incarceration, which is a fortune, this early intervention is so important. And it's been 32 years since I was in social services, but I'm so proud of where the program has gone and to have all of these school resources is so important and I just really appreciate the day-to-day work that you do. Robin Arredondo said most of what I was going to say, so I just second what she said also, but thank you so much for everything you do and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Press Mayor?
Elizabeth, and Krista Naomi, thank you so much. The moving presentation started with so much data, so much information and plus all the stories of the children and it could be no better investment than investments in our kids and so I fully support the 40 hours a week model. Did you mention that that does not include paid holidays?
What they're doing now, no paid holidays now, but with the 40 hours per week, the 52-week plan would have holidays.
Would, right.
In summer.
Yes, summer and paid sick days and all of that. Fully benefits. So, yes, well, as we, I'm fully supportive and look forward to having a discussion about long-term funding models for the program and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move the agenda item around one more time because we know we have individuals here on an item. If it's okay with the council, can we move it to the Louis Voitade up right now and then we'll follow that with the finance again?
Hi, Mayor and Council. Elizabeth Higgins, Chief of Staff to the Mayor and Council, here to discuss the Dolor Sport Today and Scholarship opportunity that is on the agenda this evening. Just a little bit of context on August 20- Just a little bit of context, on August 27th and September 19th at the Work Study, Vice Mayor Lauren Kubi asked that we explore ways of memorializing a day to commemorate Dolores Huerta and her work. Dolores Huerta, for those who don't know, is one of the most prominent labor activists of the 20th century and she's a leader of the Chicano Civil Rights Movement. And the council agreed to have staff bring back forth an item to a future IRS, which is now, to discuss what might be an appropriate way to celebrate her work. A little bit more background, Dolores Huerta was born on April 10th, 1930, and will celebrate her 90th birthday this year in 2020. Can you call her? Oh, yes. There you go. And there's a little bit more about her on this slide. She co-founded the United Farm Workers with Cesar Chavez. She has received the United States Presidential Eleanor Roosevelt Award for Human Rights. And then in 2012 by President Barack Obama, she was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom. There's also more information about her past in the agenda or in the memo that's attached to the agenda. Just as an FYI, there are several entities that have recognized Dolores Huerta and have commemorated a day for her. There are several school districts in Texas that have a Community Day of Service. Also, Washington State, California, Nevada, and Mexico have all designated a date certain to celebrate and commemorate her work. So there are three recommendations that staff discussed as they met. And these can be taken either separately or together. It's up to the council direction. So the first one would be to have a resolution designating April 10th, which is Dolores Huerta's birthday, as Dolores Huerta Day in the city of Tempe. The city would encourage a day of service for both employees and residents alike. And we would work with our volunteer coordinator to provide those opportunities for public service to our community. The second item or the second way that option would be to include as part of the state of the neighborhood, a Dolores Huerta Scholarship. And it would be at council direction, but the thought was to provide a scholarship to a worthy high school senior who has plans for a future in public service and advocacy and who has a record of service in the community. We looked to the HRC to be involved in this process and to create the criteria and to act as the selection committee. And we looked at the state of the neighborhoods because that coincides with the April date of her birthday. Usually the state of the neighborhoods is at the beginning of April. And the third possible recommendation is to also, as part of the state of the neighborhoods, do a Dolores Huerta Advocacy Award that would focus on an individual's work in their community advocacy, social justice, civil rights. And that would also be created by the HRC, the criteria, and they would also act as the selection committee. And we would make sure that the criteria were separate and apart from the Chuck Malpied Award that's already in place as the neighbor award. And so those are the three options for the council to consider. If there's direction to go forward, we would bring a resolution back to a future regular council meeting on the day of service. And then we would work with HRC and our Neighborhood Advisory Commission to include the scholarship and the award in the state of the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information and presentation. And I want to thank Vice Mayor Kubi for bringing this forward. Do you want to take it off?
Sure. So this idea germinated in my mind actually during Equal Pay Month in April because I thought, think of all the figures and leaders in our country. Dolores Huerta, she's someone who didn't really get the recognition. It's growing recognition, but she really didn't get the recognition for her work. And she worked side-by-side with Cesar Chavez. And we have a paid holiday for Cesar Chavez. And it just struck with me. And I ruminated about it a bit and I was thinking about it over the summer. And I decided I was going to call the foundation, Dolores Huerta Foundation. Forgive me for repeating the story, but some of you haven't heard it or at home, you might not have heard it. So I called on this hot summer day. It was 5:30 in the afternoon in California and I called the foundation. And I got on the phone and I was talking intensely, as I sometimes do, about how impactful Dolores Huerta has been in my life. I had the chance to meet her, to show her film, Dolores, and spoke about how unfair it was that she really didn't get the credit or doesn't get the credit she deserves. She was the originator of "Cese Puerta," that very famous phrase that is heart and soul to a lot of us activists in the social, economic, environmental justice movement. And so I was going on like just a blue streak. I wouldn't stop talking. And then there was this pause and I thought, maybe there's a disconnection on the phone. And then I heard this voice say, "I'm so honored by what you're saying to me." And I realized, I'm speaking to Dolores Huerta herself. And wasn't it apt that it was 5:30 on a Friday and there she was, the only employee working at the foundation that day? And it just struck me as perfect. And so it's sort of come full circle. And then I reached out to a young woman, Elizabeth Holman, and we were meeting and she wanted to get involved in the city. And I said, "What about Dolores Huerta? Let's look into Dolores Huerta's life and service and would you like to do some research?" And so Elizabeth, you did an amazing job. You researched her history. You found out every city, every state, every school board that had some kind of celebratory or service day for Dolores. I'm going to cry, don't. And you did so much research and writing about this and you organized students in your school to be interested and students outside of your school to be interested and give personal statements. And you came here and spoke. And when I was, you 17 or 16? 15. When I was 15, I can't imagine speaking in front of a big group like this about something so important to you. So I cannot say enough how proud I am. Your parents must be so proud of you for your work and your passion and advocacy in bringing this forward. So I don't mean to stack the deck with a lot of emotion here, but I think this is Tempe to support and to encourage social justice advocacy throughout our neighborhoods, throughout our schools, and throughout our community. So with that, I would like to see us move forward with all three options.
And I think, I really appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing this forward because, as I mentioned earlier with the last topic regarding our youth and how we're a caring, compassionate community and we recognize individuals for their service and what the impact they have on our community, we do that a lot. And this is so fitting for Tempe and I think it's important that we recognize this at a time that we do the state of the city when I do the state of the neighborhoods. It's a perfect place for that and coincides with the same month. And then I know that, I think, very supportive of the resolution, very supportive of having a day. And also, have we talked, has anybody talked to the HRC, the Human Relations Commission, about this? Or does it go back to them? How would they recommend, if there was a scholarship, would they look to partnerships with other individuals for scholarships or something? I think that would be important. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, she didn't get answered. I don't know if you...
Mayor and Council, Jonae did bring it to their attention, just as a brief item, as, you know, this is coming up for discussion at the council, you know, do you have any thoughts? They were interested in the prospect and they definitely wanted to be involved in the criteria and what that looked like and the day of service and how that would be moved forward. So they did express an interest in having it move forward.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, great. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, because I had to do my homework on Dolores. So thank you for that. I appreciate learning more and really understanding, I think, the history. And I have to give kudos to Elizabeth for coming out, not you that's back here. You have to hear, you have to be here, but she didn't have to be here. And so thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts and what you think. And so I thought about it and I kind of thought about some of the things that we're kind of already doing where it might fit. So I was leaning more towards the scholarship type of thing, you know, in the way. And the reason why is recently, we were contacted by Jenny Norton in regards to creating a scholarship kind of to help celebrate ron pies and, you know, what he has done for the community and actually did it through the College Connect Program and helped create some criteria and then was able to, you know, she funded it and did all those things but, and created the criteria. And being able to look for a high school senior that would fit that mold was one of the things that is now currently happening because of her. And I kind of think of this kind of the same way. Or even, I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to attend the Dollars for Scholars because they do a lot of exactly what you want to do where they have over $50,000 scholarships that they give away every single year to seniors. And they're all dedicated for a certain reason, you know, maybe it's for an athlete or maybe it's for somebody that's going into the tourism industry or somebody that's going into business. But they're all sponsored by somebody that is passionate and caring about that particular, you know, topic or whatever it may be. So that might be a really great way to be able to do it. And they're all independently funded. So people within the community actually donate dollars to create these scholarships that go to our Tempe Union High School kids, our Tempe Prep kids, pretty much any high school senior in the city of Tempe or within the Tempe Union High School District boundaries. So I thought maybe that would be great. And I think to definitely include the Human Relations Commission, if that's something that they want to do, I mean, to be a part of that and set that criteria. So I mean, I just thought that might be a really great way to be able to move forward and create something that would be sustainable. I was just a little worried. I didn't want to set a new precedent with it being funded through the city. So hopefully, as it moves forward, that, you know, either if it's the HRC or whoever we could partner with could find that funding source. Yeah, I think that would be a definitely wise thing. So anyway, that was my thought process. Thank you.
Any others?
I'm...
Councilmember Adams?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I'm good with all three options. They all are great. So I'm supporting all three.
Didn't you have to pick one?
You don't have to pick one.
Oh, you don't?
No.
No, they all sound good, that's the thing. And then just what was said about the scholarships, that was the only thing, is just the resources of trying to provide that. And I imagine through her foundation, I don't know if she already does anything like that, but something to look at to see what else was even parlayed off of that. But yeah.
So it looks like consensus is to move forward with the options of three, but go back to HRC to see what the recommendations would be to come back for us?
I guess my thought process is though too is, I kind of am worried about encouraging a day of service for employees and residents. I mean, that's going to take resources for us to do that. I mean, are we going to do that with Tempe Carers? Is that something that can be worked together? I just am really worried about, it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. I just think we have to be very careful by saying, "Oh yeah, I support all three," but not really knowing, I would want it to come back to us so we could at least see what that impact looks like and not really fully understand. And then especially get some feedback from the HRC. I don't think that's fair to drop it on their lap without getting their feedback. That's my thought process.
Yeah, there's something to say about that. With the coordination of the spring, usually Tempe Carers or other things in the spring, they have the big spring cleanup. And I know that we support those avenues. How does that tie with that? I don't know. But just something to consider, yeah.
Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not opposed to all three, all at once. However, as I think about that, I wouldn't want the importance or the significance of what we're trying to do by establishing this to be lost in just one sweeping, "Here are all three." Perhaps an option could be to roll it out eventually, but starting with the advocacy award in that we need to educate. Obviously, I heard in the room, a few others who may not have known about the history and should. And this would provide an opportunity for us to educate, educate people about why we're doing this and why we as a community stand with Dolores in her work and what she believed in. So I think, let's be very mindful. If we go with all three, fine. But I think what's important is how we communicate this. And just saying yes to all three doesn't accomplish what we need to do.
Vice Mayor?
So I could speak to some of those issues. I think very central to this idea is to celebrate and have a day where we honor her, especially, she's going to be 90 years old in April. And I think it's important to do the honoring and to honor her in a way that doesn't include some kind of organizing would be sort of antithetical to who she is. Now, it doesn't mean that we organize the actual event, but it means making people aware of all of the opportunities to get involved. And we could do that by soliciting from, we used to do Tempe Karma, Tempe Community Council, where we could find out opportunities where you could work that weekend and events going on across the valley. And we could just simply list them, for the first year especially. We had a really profoundly good letter that came from CHISP, which is part of the League of Conservation Voters in support of this program. And I would want to reach out to them for involvement with that. But, you know, this coming April, during Equal Pay Month, to announce that we will forever have a day where we acknowledge her service, I think is really central to who she is and to what we're trying to do here because we're trying to honor her advocacy and her grassroots organizing. And it doesn't mean that we do the grassroots organizing. Tempe Carers wouldn't really matter, it's sort of a, doesn't really have the same kind of one-to-one correspondence. She's thoroughly about an environmental cleanup, although it isn't necessarily that, I realize. But I'm fine with thinking that we push off, we're going to organize something, but for this first year, it could be simply providing a listing and doing a proclamation and just declaring that every day, every April 10th from here on in is Dolores Huerta Day. I think the awards and the scholarship are amazing and be a really added value to it. But in my mind, since that might take some funding, that could come a year later because that's going to take a little work to get the funding. The Dolores Huerta Day itself doesn't involve funding so much as having social media and listing about opportunities that are for us. And one last thing before, I know you want to speak to what I'm saying, but one last thing is that we've developed this plan for Equity in Action and we've reached out to social justice organizations and we're funding them. So there's a natural corollary that reach out to the social justice organizations, we're funding through Equity in Action and see if they would like to do something or highlight something that we can help promote for that day on April 10th, 2020.
Councilmember Chin?
I would love to hear from the Human Relations Commission in their work in conversation with the Neighborhood Advisory Commission. I think this is something that we ask them to look at and bring forward with suggestions of how, what it would look like, with your suggestion of if there's a day of commemoration, what that looks like and what their action would be. I don't think it comes from up here. I think the important thing is that it comes from the residents and our commission.
Clear? Just kidding. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you. And there's a lot to be said about what Councilmember Chin brought up. The communication, the awareness of her work and dedication, there's so many outlets that we could do within different programs or different events that we go throughout the year. But I think that is important as we start making steps and strides. I, you know, all three sounds good if, depending on what that looks like, I don't think, we're all disagreeing on the recognition of what she has done. But I just think that we need to be mindful of how we're doing it. So I would agree with that.
So it sounds like there's consensus to have a Dolores Huerta Day with resolution, proclamation, having that be consistent. And then working with our partners that have been identified, we've talked about the HRC and then CHISP and then some of the other stakeholders. And we can have, we can, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon for us to reach out to other stakeholders to get input on what we're trying to accomplish and let them know. And at the same time, we can educate individuals. And also work with our school district, let them know who Dolores Huerta is. I mean, it's a good example for that. And we get that information out to especially the young, the youth in our community about a day of service and what it means. It really defines our city. So is everybody good with that start?
We'll come back or we'll provide you an update from HRC and NAC about...
It could be a Friday memo, a Friday packet memo. It could be, if it's more than that, more substantial, need a little more direction, obviously we could put it on the agenda.
And would the next step be a resolution after that, a resolution or hearings?
Yeah, a resolution would come, I think, to a regular council meeting where you would vote on it. I don't know if you wanted to wait until closer to her birthday or do it sooner or we can look at what regular council meeting is in April.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you. All right, next. Ken Jones.
Yay, Ken.
Yay, Ken, finance and Mark Day. Come on forward.
This is good stuff.
And Mark Day.
Sorry. Everything we've committed to. We're going to figure out how we can put all that together within our budget with our forecast and what's happening. So this is all the good stuff. This is just the beginning. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ken Jones, Deputy City Manager, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director.
The good news, Mayor, is that we do have a positive forecast, financial forecast.
Thank you for your presentation.
Any questions?
Let us know if it changes.
So as you know, we come before you every year, this time of year, before the budget cycle starts so that we can give you a lead-in to what the resources will look like. It's... long-range forecast because last year, there were questions about, should we budget for a downturn in the economy? How do we plan for that? What are we going to do? So we're going to touch on that tonight, just to give you some, a little bit more development around how your budget should look next year. As you know, we give you a very detailed memo that has a lot of information in it. This will just be a summary presentation. At the end of the presentation, we'll ask you for input on any changes you might have to our financial strategies. The long-range final, financial forecast clearly plays a large role in providing assurance of financial stability for the city. And specifically, we track that in terms of bond ratings and fund balance policies. Mark?
Okay. As we begin the budget process, we'd like to review the upcoming public meeting dates and the development of the operating and capital budgets. So first is the public forums, which I'll go over in a minute here. We'll be back here on February 20th on the capital side with all the proposed projects for inclusion in the CIP, as well as an update to the long-range forecast. And then on March 19th will be the recommended CIP projects. And we'll be back in April with the city manager, city managers' recommended budget. And then following that is the statutory requirements with tentative adoption in May and then final adoption in June, as well as the property tax levy. As I mentioned about the public forums, so we'd like to briefly go over our public outreach efforts to inform our residents and gather their feedback during the development of the budget. So first and foremost, we have a website that contains resources and information for our residents on all aspects of the operating and capital budget development process. Then on October 28th, we opened the budget online forum to gather resident input on the city's operating and capital budgets. Residents are provided a theoretical $100, so similar to the STAR tool, to spend among various programs and services aligned with the five council priorities. And this forum is open until February 28th, and we'll be providing the feedback from the residents through this forum to, back to the council. And the municipal budget office is coordinating with community relations and neighborhood services to inform residents about the budget process, the online forum and upcoming public meetings via Tempe Today, press releases, and social media. We are working on finalizing the public forum dates, but we're planning on three meetings with one of those on a Saturday. And then I just wanted to mention that the municipal budget office and Strategic Management and Diversity Office had a first meeting with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission last week, and we discussed the city's budget process, and we're learning about their priorities for consideration in the upcoming budget process. So that was one of, we probably have three or four meetings with them coming up.
So before I move to the slide, I just want to comment on what Mark just said. We are being much more proactive, reaching out to people to get budget input at the direction of city council. Every year, you tell us to go and get more and more information, and we've done that. And reaching out to the youth makes great sense, and we will bring back that information to you about what they say. But I have to tell you, just realistically, we got great turnouts at our budget forums during the economic downturn. When you have a great recession and you start talking about cutting programs and services, we had a forum at the South Tempe Substation, Police Substation, and it was standing room only. It was packed. When times are good and you're not making cuts to programs and services, people aren't as willing to come out and give you their input. But we're trying our best to elicit that input early and be proactive. So thank you for that recommendation over the years, and we're taking it to heart. So the forecast assumptions, as I said earlier, we have detail, we have a full page of detailed assumptions in your package. We're just going to touch on a couple here. The forecast continues to be positive, not much different than what it was last year. We're still projecting moderate to slowing growth, continued salary increases and market adjustments. I wanted to remind you that the pre-K costs assumed in 2120, 2021 was only a two-year pilot and will end in our forecast. We don't have anything forecast beyond that. If the city council gives us direction at one way or the other, we'll, we'll, we'll change that. But as of right now, there's nothing in the forecast. Some recent impacts, the sound decisions that you all have made in the past have really led to economic development and growth that has funded a lot of our program growth, a lot of our programs and services. So everybody in the city, residents and businesses alike, are benefiting from that economic growth that has resulted from those economic decisions that have happened in the past. So that's really good news. We put a couple statistics up here. You can see that the development-related revenue of the past six years is 104% of what it was in the prior, the six years prior to that. Bed tax, 11.1% average annual increases over the past six years. These are two big examples of what happens when you have economic development and growth in the city. These are the results that you get. And sometimes it seems like it's a little time coming, but we ought to celebrate those decisions that were made in the past that have led to this economic boom that has, that has really funded a lot of the services and programs that you guys have added recently. We're going to focus, in your packet, you have all of the funds covered, but we want to focus on the general fund tonight a little bit, more than the other funds. You still have continued capacity for growth. There's still a strong fund balance. I reminded you last year, I'll remind you again this year, that you had asked us, the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority reimburses us for the Diablo Stadium improvements that were made a decade ago. And those are still set unassigned, are in, are assigned in the fund balance, so that is not part of the unassigned fund balance. You asked us to hold on to that until we're sure what we're going to do with Diablo Stadium. Now that we have a Diablo Stadium plan moving forward, we'll be able to come back to you with more specific things that really need to be done at Diablo Stadium, and it far exceeds the amount we have set aside. So it's a big number. It will be a big number. You're all familiar with this. This is a snapshot of an interactive model we use. I know people in the audience at home probably can't see the small numbers, but you all are familiar with it. I'll just give you a couple reminders. Every number in here is expressed in thousands of dollars, so add three zeros to every number. There's a chart on the left that shows revenues and expenditures. There's a chart on the right that shows our fund balance and our targeted fund balance. Targeted fund balance is to be within 20 to 30% over the entire five years. We target closer to the 25% in year one. We are over that fund balance because we intentionally built that up because we're protecting against recessionary trends. We're nine years into, into economic growth. That's beyond what the average is. I think we're 10 years into what is typically nine years. So we have a strong fund balance. Council directed us to project to get that down to the top of the fund balance policy, not the bottom. That's what we're doing. You'll see that in the shaded gray box are the variables that we put into this model. This is not a recommendation. This is an example. So this shows adding 10 positions next year, adding $3 million in recurring supplementals, adding another $3 million in non-recurring funding, the cash funding of the CIP, about 1.1% of the total general fund revenues. So these are just examples, and this is not meant for you to study the numbers as much as it is to say, this is projected growth over the entire five-year forecast, and we still stay within our fund balance policy. This is good news. This is the same news you saw last year. It is, it is continuing. This year, we wanted to talk about what you discussed last year. What should we do about a recession? Should we plan for a recession? Now, let me describe that in several different ways. If you said, we think a recession is going to happen in the next three or four years, you would definitely do something. You would say, let's think about our spending. We don't do that. We don't estimate when the economy might turn down so that you hold back on spending next year and we are holding taxpayer money and not funding the programs and services that we should. Instead, we plan to be able to overcome a recessionary trend. So these are examples. And beginning in 2001, we saw about a 10% reduction over three, over two years in our sales tax. This is just our city sales tax, which is a really good indicator of our total general fund revenue. That was what we would call a typical recession. We would call that a moderate recession. It was some work to overcome, but our plans are, we were able to overcome it relatively readily. The 21.1% reduction that happened during the Great Recession was different. Everybody knows this impacted all cities and towns, all personal budgets. And you can see that there's kind of a brown-colored depiction on this chart of the temporary tax. We implemented a 0.2% temporary tax over four years, which helped us recover from that recession. But that was a deep dive. We really went down. So we don't want to talk about what we're going to do if another 20% recession hits within these, within the next four years. You can't plan for that. You're going to have to react to some extent. But we do want to talk about what would happen if that 10% moderate. Those figures that we had shown you on the previous slide showing $3 million recurring and $3 million non-recurring supplementals and 10 positions added, if you did all of that and didn't change from that model, and we got a 10% downturn in our tax revenues, this is what would happen. We would spend our entire fund balance. We would, we would spend it down within four years, three years on this chart. It wouldn't be good. So what would we do to overcome that? How have we planned to overcome that? If we look at the next chart, what you see is what, what a plan looks like, not a recommendation, but what a plan looks like to recover from a moderate recession, and it's not awful. It's, we, this is assuming we still added the 10 positions next year, we still added the 3 million in recurring, still added the 3 million in non-recurring. What would you do if the recession hit in the following year? Well, we would probably reduce 10 positions through attrition. We would say, take the next 10 positions to become vacant and don't fill them. We would reduce budgets by $4 million recurring and $4 million non-recurring. That's not a humongous number in a hun, you know, in a, in a budget that's three-quarters of a billion dollars, but it's, it's a significant number. We would have to make some changes. But these changes seem doable. They seem moderate. $4 million one year, $3 million the next, another $3 million the year after that. What we're showing you here is not a plan, but as we're showing you, we are prepared to overcome a moderate recession. I just want to make that distinction. We don't estimate when it will occur and start cutting next year's budget because we think it will occur. We make sure that next year's budget is in, in the context of what we would need to do if we needed to overcome it. So this is just giving you that additional context that you kind of requested last year, which is, what are we going to do if a recession hits? I did want to point out one thing, and this is important. In this model, we are not cutting personnel costs. We are continuing with the pay plans. The strategy behind that is the strategy that the city manager has a discussion with our employee groups every year, which is, we have taken our employee increases every year to a stable amount of 3% steps, and we think we can sustain that through a moderate recession. We don't think it's fair to say to an employee, this is how much we paid you yesterday. Oh, by the way, there are going to be 10 less people working here. You're going to have to do your work and theirs, and we're going to cut your pay. That doesn't seem reasonable. It seems more reasonable to continue through their pay plan, knowing that they're going to have to do the work they did yesterday, probably plus some more. That's what we have planned here. We're not laying people off. We're not cutting pay. We're just adjusting budgets through attrition. So if, if you agree with that, you know, I guess you could nod your heads. But if you have, at the, when we get to the last slide, if you have some other financial strategies other than that, this would be a good time to share that because we're, we're going to enter back into negotiations with employee groups, and we need to make commitments about how we plan to overcome recessions. And it has varied, let me just say, it has varied from city manager to city manager. Some folks would say, don't, don't reduce positions, pay everybody a little bit less. Okay? That's another strategy.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so one of my biggest questions is, is as we go through this whole process, and as we get presented with needs, variety of needs. My thought process always goes to the core of what we need to provide for the city in terms of public works, public safety, and the needs that need to be addressed there within a five-year plan. And I just think that, and I'll say, so the council is, I probably would want a presentation on those three groups on what they're projecting. I'm not talking running lean and we can get by. I'm talking running effective and efficient because with our growth, with what we have coming in downtown, with the population, with everything that we go, our core stuff, our infrastructure needs to be looked at. And I think that we've stated this before, but I think that's a guideline, to give us a real good guideline in saying, okay, we see what we got, we see what we need to go, and we also have these fringe things that we know there are benefits to the city. But I think logically, we need to make sure that, that those issues from those areas are looked at real thoroughly as we go through this process.
I missed something about that earlier. Okay.
Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Edna Savage?
Well, we do have projections as far as our population growth and things as we increase and become more dense. So perhaps just to kind of talk about what Joel was talking about, is just maybe we could look at some models and obviously be estimates, but if our population increases by so many thousands, how many more public safety people would we need? How many more public works people would we need? Those kinds of things that were core services. And, and second is, you do such a great job, Ken and Mark, on, on this, presenting this. And I really have a lot of faith in, in how you project these, and it's nice to have you both on board and in seat on, on budgets.
Councilmember Edna Savage?
I just want to make clear, they, you're not asking us, like, you're just saying, in case there is a decline, right? That our priority is to make sure that we keep our employees whole, and that was your strategy. I just want you to know, I agree with that.
Yes, yes, Councilmember.
And I will tell you what else I think later when it gets to the question.
Okay. We are, we are definitely not asking for your input on how or where to cut budgets in the, in the event of a downturn. What we're showing you is, we can recover from that, and this is our philosophy. Keep the employees whole, make budget cuts through an attrition approach and things like that. It's, it's merely philosophies. Your charter, your charter requires that if we start cutting budgets or transferring between departments, we have to come back to you. We're never going to do that without your input. The detailed input will always be sought, and you will always give us that detailed input. We're just talking about philosophies at this point. If you all said to us, we're sure that a recession is coming and we want to stockpile money next year, then we're going to take a different approach. We think we are covered. We think our fund balance covers us. We think we have room to expand the budget next year, and we'll bring those numbers to you. But if, but if you have a different approach, we want to hear it.
Sorry, Mayor, I just, just to follow, you made me think of something else in regards to having a decline. And my guess, if we did have a decline, it's probably going to be because of development. I mean, because that, you said it was a, over 100% increase over the last six years. I mean, that's an amazing, amazing number, right? And I'm wondering, would it be wise to really start thinking about the correlation of the revenues that we're utilizing to help accommodate this development, right? Whether it's like Joel mentioned in regards to public safety, because, you know, things were growing up, it's completely different, whether it's, you know, water or services or, I mean, there's so many things. I wonder if there's something that we might want to start thinking about, is the correlation of those two things. When, if, no, never, though there'll be a decline, I'd like to think, but if there is in those certain areas, just to be able to kind of see, well, okay, maybe this is where we need to start thinking about because if our, our construction costs have gone down significantly, then maybe some of our services or some of the revenues that we're, we're utilizing to help promote or support that would be one of the things that we could think about. I don't know if there's a, there are correlation there, but it seems like there should be some type of a tie to the excessive amount of construction and development that we have going in the revenue that it's generating.
Mayor and Councilmember, thank you for that. I'm going to answer a couple of questions. One is, we have pretty sophisticated models on, on revenue generation, and we are projecting that the revenue coming from development decreases and flattens at some point in the future. So that's built into this model. What you're seeing is the ability to expand, assuming that's going to happen. We have assumed that unfortunately over the last couple of years, and it hasn't happened. It continues to grow. That's the old economic joke, which is, we have projected five out of the last three downturns. So this, we, we assume that's going to happen. See, economic jokes don't go very far. We had another, we had another comment, Mayor, about, lost my train of thought for a second. We had another comment, oh, about what we are going to plan. Councilmember Adams?
For the, the amount of people that were, you know, projecting to come into the, do we have like a presentation on how that would affect our basic public safety and public works?
So our performance measures relate to that, but they're not directly related. Um, we had another, we had another comment, Mayor, about, lost my train of thought for a second. We had another comment, oh, about what we are going to plan, Councilmember Adams.
For the, the amount of people that were, you know, projections to come into the, do we have like a presentation on how that would affect our basic public safety and public works?
So our performance measures relate to that, but they're not directly related. What we do is, for instance, the fire department, they look at response times, and they project what the growth in an area will be, and how that will impact response times. So we focus the budget on how do we continue to provide those response times that are our goal. So we don't say, this many people are going to be there, therefore, we need to add personnel. We look at, this many people are going to be there, how's that going to affect our response time? That's what we need to budget for. We need to budget for those measurements that we've established as good performance measures. And, and that has worked pretty well. I mean, it, it resulted in a really good model for when and why we needed Station 7, those kinds of things.
Are we doing the same thing for the police department?
Yes, they, they have different measures of performance, but the, the way that population growth impacts their performance is how we will budget, to make sure that we maintain the high level of performance. So, so you all get to comment on the outcomes of the performance, and not necessarily the inputs of how many stations or how many personnel. What is the outcome of the performance that you want?
What about public works and infrastructure?
Same, same thing, same thing.
With, we're lucky, because, yes, we've seen a lot of growth, but we have also have seen a lot of need and programs and services that we have been presented tonight, that we didn't have 10 years ago, or six years ago, for that matter. So this is, all comes full circle, and it's so important with the citizen satisfaction survey. It's so important, the smart start tool that we're using as a council for our budget. It's important to have this presentation now, as we're preparing for what's coming up ahead. And it's even more important that we have the sustainable revenues that are not one time, the long term. And that's been strong strategic planning for our infrastructure, and, because we do have aging infrastructure. And as we grow as a city internally, and as the population increases on a daily basis, it's not going to go away. So we're lucky that we have what we have, and we're going to continue to use those revenues and those resources to fit within, because what we're doing today is a lot different than what's five years ago, even two years ago, or a year ago, because there's more services and items that, it's not just basic services anymore, as we're seeing, so.
Well, we really appreciate the dialogue. We like having this kind of dialogue, because it's clear that we're all on the same page, and we're all talking about the same thing, and everybody has a clear understanding of where we're trying to go. So we appreciate that.
I do. I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay. I'll briefly go over the city's other major funds. So the enterprise funds, water, wastewater are stable with no rate increases scheduled this year or for 2020, but the planned spend down the fund balance. Staff will be updating their comprehensive rate model to determine the specific timing and amount of future rate adjustments, and evaluating the use of additional page ago or cash funding for CIP projects. The solid waste forecast includes the proposed rate increases presented to council September that will be considered for formal adoption in December. This forecast does include increased spending on containers and vehicles that align with asset life cycles, and additional personnel that will be requested during the upcoming budget process. The next enterprise fund is the golf fund. It forecasts modest increases in rates and conservative growth in rounds of play, along with the slowing growth in expenses as operational efficiencies are implemented. And beginning this fiscal year, large golf course projects will be funded with bond funds, repaid with secondary property taxes. And then the last enterprise is an emergency medical transportation or ambulance fund. This forecast includes the addition of a fifth company in 2020 and a sixth company in 2020, 2023. The revenues and expenses are in line with projections for the fund when it was established in 2018. And then I'll briefly go over our special revenue funds versus transit. This fund is stable with a measured spend down of fund balance. The streetcar operational costs have been built in, and future transit fund priorities will be focused on maintaining existing assets with minimal system expansion. Then the transportation or her fund receives the majority of its funding from the state shared highway user revenue fund that is subject to legislation that would change the distribution formula and the amount the city receives. This forecast also assumes a 1.5 million annual transfer from the general fund to fund street repair and maintenance projects, but the actual amount of the transfer each year will be based on council direction for acceleration of the payment quality or PQI index and transportation's ability to complete street repair and maintenance projects. And then our last special revenue is the performing arts fund. This forecast reflects revenue from the new artsing culture tax that becomes effective January 1st, 2021, with the expiration of the performing act, arts tax on 12/30/2020. But as the tax rates are the same, there's not a material change in the amount of revenue received. However, with the retirement of the art center debt this fiscal year, there's additional capacity to fund arts and cultural programs. So this forecast does assume the transfer of some general fund arts and cultural programs to the performing arts fund, with community services coming forward with additional program, programming requests during the upcoming budget process.
That's all we had, Mayor. So any, any, we'll take any recommendations you have for strategies or specific budget recommendations.
Vice Mayor Kiwi, then I have a comment.
Yeah, so I agree with the strategy. I just wanted to commend you guys on the website. There's a lot of clearly presented and graphically really interesting charts and such, and recognizing that everybody absorbs through the written word, but through images. And there's a lot of really helpful things that I, I use, I know, when residents write to me about budget questions. I would just ask in the budget-related reports if we could update and put the last few long-range forecasts in, and also the quarterly performance reports. We don't have this year fiscal year's reports in there. And I know we've done a lot of work with the website, but it's just so clearly presented. It's like a, a beacon for transparency in government. And I hope we can find a way too to get that word out to our, all our neighbor associations, just that this, we have this, this resource available, and people can, with open books, they can really kind of delve deep, or delve in a superficial way, but learn more about the budget process.
Thank you. And I'll congratulate Mark on his team. They, they developed a budget in brief this year, which you've seen, which is taking the multi-hundred-page budget book and shrinking it down to a dozen, half a dozen pages. And it, it's been well-received as well.
Is the print smaller?
We, we just.
I really want to thank you, Ken and Mark, for your, your great forecast. I think we're very lucky to have both of you and, and your team. I really appreciate you taking the time to look at the possible recessions and how that would impact us. Obviously, we are, a recession impact would really impact our local sales tax, which is a big portion of our revenue stream. And we're very lucky to have a very diverse revenue-based approach for our city, so that we can make sure that, in a down, in a case of a downturn, that we have a pretty balanced budget. Also, the six steps that you outlined, I think, are great in our, in our packet. So thank you for that.
Great.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, traffic control and protecting public spaces in downtown. Take just a second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me? Yes. My name is Marilyn Drosa. I am the engineering and transportation director, and sitting with me here are probably two of the best public service representatives that I could hope for tonight. Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Kim Hale, the PD. Craig Fredericks, assistant fire, medical, rescue.
So hard.
So I'm going to do the talking, but know that we've had many conversations, and so I think that at the end, there'll be an opportunity to ask any questions that public safety, if, if, if the question requires a public safety response, these guys are backing me up. So this item was requested by council at an August meeting, and is in essence a presentation about possible bollard treatments in the downtown area. Staff would like to take this opportunity to frame the conversation regarding bollards more strategically around overall traffic control and protection of public spaces, with a focus on special events in the downtown area. This use of bollards for space planning in the downtown area hasn't really been part of an asset management strategy or a master or strategic planning effort. Their use came instead as suggestions to support pedestrian traffic and improve aesthetics at special events. Programmatically, then, this conversation doesn't fit neatly into any of the council-adopted performance measures, but instead supports some overall strategic priorities, including safe and secure communities and quality of life. Tempe likes a party. There are a number of special events that the community can count on each year, and many of them are hosted in the downtown area. Staff work with these event organizers to provide planning and security, and to date, these events have been largely incident-free. But Tempe is changing. Our downtown area is projected to see a substantial increase in population over the next 20 years. The Tempe streetcar is scheduled to open in the next 18 to 24 months, and, and staff and event organizers will be planning for new and expanded events in new and different locations. Our events are also no longer local. The downtown area is transforming into an entertainment-focused destination. And then on top of that, add the fact that security is changing due to new types of threats. And communities across the country are rethinking their security So a number of department representatives and the DTA met several times to discuss the use of bollards. But during those meetings, the team came to understand that bollards, as related to traffic, aesthetics, and special events in the downtown area, really have a relationship to overall security. The team coalesced around the need for an overall security plan for the downtown area. Such a plan would include an analysis and assessment of potential threats, and evaluation of our vulnerabilities, and recommend precautionary measures, including infrastructure, such as bollards, but augmented by surveillance and technology, intelligence, training, and education. So let's talk a little more about bollards, their uses, types, and pricing. Bollards have a wide range of uses. They can be lighted to direct pedestrians, they can direct traffic, or the more robust structures can be used to protect public spaces or protect critical They also have a wide range of types and aesthetics. They can be decorative, crash-rated, flexible, rigid, removable, fixed, or retractable. So it's important to point out that you can't use any type of bollard anywhere. The use informs the type, which informs the price. So there are a wide range of prices. For a discussion of possible pricing, staff made some assumptions. We've estimated here the pricing for two types of bollards, crash-rated and removable, and crash-rated and retractable. Dependent upon the use, they don't have to be crash-rated, but we wanted to ensure council had a complete understanding of possible cost. We've assumed there are no underground utility conflicts, a two-lane treatment with nine to 10 bollards. You'll see both require a substantial foundation, and the retractable bollard would require a full-length sleeve with some electrical, hydraulic, or pneumatic controls. Pricing for a single two-lane treatment of crash-rated bollards could range from $330,000 to nearly $700,000. And depending on the use, decorative bollards, bollards might be appropriate. Of course, those would be much less. This conversation started with several suggested locations for bollard treatment, so we thought we'd share what those locations are with you. The locations, they're generally the same as those designated for the placement of water-filled barriers during special events. And they include two locations each on Mill, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Streets. Of course, with construction of the streetcar and absent the comprehensive security plan, it's hard to know if these would end up being the optimal locations. So in summary, staff is seeking council direction. Two, two questions we have. Should staff move forward with the development of a downtown security plan? If we feel that that's important and appropriate, staff would request supplemental budget to contract with a security consultant, and the plan, we would create a plan for the protection of special events and, and critical municipal infrastructure. And then secondly, are there areas of immediate or special concern where staff would like, where staff should move forward with bollard treatment outside the more comprehensive security study? And because the holidays are coming, I thought I'd remind us all of the events, the special events we'll have in downtown, just in the next couple of months.
Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and obviously, I think the council probably knows this is probably very important to me on, on, when I started this, probably about, I don't know, 10 years ago, trying to figure out where we need to start bollards at, and the use of bollards. And obviously, you know, I was looking at the aesthetic need of bollards and shutting down streets and making pedestrian-friendly atmosphere within certain areas of our downtown. And I still think that's, that's a great asset to bollards. But the bigger asset, and, and to what the presentation's all about, and, and to what I've been part of through things, through Homeland, through the City of Phoenix, is, we definitely need a security plan in the downtown Tempe, and we definitely need to look at the practicality of bollards at different levels and different locations, and to see what, you know, what bollards make sense, what types of bollards make sense, and, and types of locations. And without the security plan and other comments I won't dive into, but things come to, come to mind in terms of the need to shut down an area fast and streamlined, the protection of, of our citizens, especially when we think about the weekends and the development that we have here. I don't know how we got five or six hotels just in the downtown area with the events that potentially just on the weekends, normal weekends, we could be looking at things, what Austin experiences, what Nashville experiences, where they do shut down the streets, and they do have to do these things. And I think, going to those cities, they could probably do it better, and I would imagine that this is probably on their list to do it better. Because just a, a simple street closure sign and, and all that other stuff is, is not going to cut it, but the security of, of some of those things would. So, yes, I'm in 100% agreement that we do need to look at this. And I'm also going to say this. I think in the immediate need, if I was going to choose a street, I would choose Sixth Street. And the reason why is, that is a street that we constantly have activity on. That is a street that we actually, even with the DTA and the farmer's market, has value with that. And I think that'd be a great starting point of utilizing bollards in that location, looking at them, testing them out, whatever we need to do. But I think that location has a lot of potential to, and, and utilize all these things. And I know there's a cost to everything, but eventually, with everything else that we do to bring in, to secure our streets, we are going to start recouping that cost.
I want to, just a second. I want to, first, thank you for bringing this up. Again, we had a proactive approach with, with Ken and, and Mark. Thank you for your proactive approach on this. I know this has been a topic for some time, but I do want to, I do appreciate everything that's happening. As we all know, the downtown's growing exponentially. We're also going to have a streetcar. We're also home to a lot of special events. So a security plan is a must. I think that's the first step. I think we can get consensus from that right off the bat from the council. And I, I know that it's important that we have some type of flexibility when it comes to bollards, like, can we get them in? And I think we have a process in place that you show the costs, and I think it's important that we look at every single aspect of it, and it's going to be part of our budget process. But the security plan, absolutely. And I, and I'm not opposed to bollards, I think we need them. So I look forward to seeing how that's going to plan out with our security plan, but it's also, we need to work hand-in-hand with the DTA, and make sure that they're involved with the security plan, as well as locations of the bollards, which I think you guys have contacted them. So I think that's an important step as well. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I'm also in favor of the security plan. Safety is our highest priority. I do want us to work, to reach out to the community and get their input, and just so they know what's happening, so they're not caught off guard. And it sounds like you've talked to DTA, but also the businesses and the neighborhoods around the community to get their input. And also, I'm in favor of the removable bollards, because we're changing so fast downtown that I would like to be able to move them if we need to, and, and it just would make more sense as we develop that we might need to put them somewhere else, as opposed to where we start off.
Vice Mayor.
As relates to the security plan, our new emergency manager, that is, is that person hired yet, about to be hired? Is that, that will be in fire, medical, rescue? Is that a task that that person could lead or even complete?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, you know, that's, that's an interesting idea. We hadn't actually talked about who would lead that effort. We wanted to get some direction from council, and if we get a budget, then collaboratively, I imagine we would, there'd need to be a project manager, but of course, it'd be a team of stakeholders that would participate.
I mean, if you could look at that potential, because that's one of the reasons we're hiring an emergency manager, and made room for that in the fiscal year 1920 budget. And as far as the retractable bollards or the double cost, I, from my mind, it's ex nay on the retractable feature, as you noted. And also, about the locations, it's the possible bollards, I would just like you guys to decide that based on density and what the needs are, and not kind of commit to, you know, I don't think we should be weighing in on where the bollards should go. It seems like something that should be made by the engineers and special events people, and the first responders. who are the first responders.
If I can comment on that.
Yeah.
But I do think it's very important that we reach out to our community and talk to them about what's, what we're proposing and get their input. They might have some suggestions that we hadn't even thought of, because they're there every single day.
Councilor Navarro.
Just wanted to clarify to you, so I proposed also Sixth Street to be that street to have the initial look at for once they go through the study, but if we're going to look at bollards and put it on our list of, hey, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to start at this area, I think that was an appropriate street to start at. And, go ahead.
But I just don't think we should be deciding that. There's one, there's one particular business there that does a lot of, does a lot of events, and they may have a need for it, but I think the downtown Tempe authority should have some input into that as well, you know, or it should be done as a function of where the greatest need is. And maybe that, that's that, but I don't think we should be deciding where that should go and benefit maybe one particular business over another.
And I only bring that up because of just knowing the mass amount of events that happen usually in that location, so I'm just going off of that. But yes, 100% agree, DTA.
Councilmember Erdano Savage.
Yeah, you know, I think a security plan is a good idea. I don't know about the emergency manager. I think they definitely need to be involved. I just don't know if that's like what their main responsibility is, so I would certainly think it's going to be a collaborative effort regardless of moving forward, what that looks like. And I guess, I mean, of course, the DTA, I think they're great, but I want to make sure that we're reaching the businesses that aren't members of the DTA. I think that's really important, too, that, you know, we're, we have a good connection with them, and I'm going to guess our outreach team already probably, and Nikki and her team know how to reach them. So I think that would be really important. And I don't disagree, I think if it's something that we are going to be evaluating in the budget, in the, it might be smart to kind of start small, to see if we can, you know, I don't know what location is. I mean, honestly, Sixth Street really makes sense, just because there's so many things that are happening on Sixth Street, like the Sixth Street Market. And then I think there's a lot of shutdowns just on a lot of through-traffic right there, but I'm not one to say what's the right street or what's not. I think that needs to happen through the committee or the group. So, you know, whatever that looks like moving forward, and I think if it rises to the level of priorities, great, you know, through the budget process, and I think for it to even rise to the level, maybe reducing those costs a little bit and keeping it, because I saw a lot of different places in downtown, I mean, that's going to be a hard sell, I think, to get that through. But if something that we just want to at least try to pilot and see if we have some successes with it, you know, maybe finding a specific location where it really makes sense would be a good way to push it forward.
So consensus on the downtown, downtown security plan. Obviously, the question is, if we, if there is, are we going to contract a security consultant? I don't know where the money's going to come from, but I'm going to look to you guys and let us know that. Where's the money going to come from for the consultant?
Supplemental.
Supplemental?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, yeah, we would submit a supplemental request. We'd have to decide approximately what kind of funding we thought was appropriate. We'd check and see what other communities have done. And then it would take, you know, 18 months probably to procure and create the plan.
Okay. I do think we need to create a plan for protection for special events. Obviously, cars are used as a human, you know, as a weapon today, vehicles are. So I think having a special events and a, and a critical municipal infrastructure plan, I think is for protection, is kind of evident, along with the security plan. Is council good with that as well?
I'm like.
Okay. And then obviously, you're going to come back to us from the, from your consultant, it's going to let us know about the immediate bollard treatment and where we'd look and work with DTC. Is that, you're going to come back to, or DTA? Sorry, DTC.
Is that a new one? DTC.
Is that good, council?
Yeah, and I agree. And just so you know, I'm excited about it. For eight, 10 years, I've had input from a lot of neighbors. I don't think I've had one negative thing, which I think is going to be hopefully a positive thing. But yeah, just, I think that's good evaluation.
Yes, council, Vice Mayor QB.
I just said ASU has a Center for Emergency Management and Homeland Security, but Brian Gerber and Melanie Gahl are really well-known national experts, and they've had some international conferences here. And not that they be the consultants, they wouldn't be, but they may be two people you could call to consult with, just as service worker, ask their, their opinion. They really are seen as the national leaders, they came to ASU about two years ago, and their whole focus is on emergency management for cities.
Okay. You need any more further direction from us?
I think so. You need any direction?
I think I'm good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. Next, establishment of an audit committee.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, members of the council. My name is Stephen Mettman, deputy city manager. To my right is Bill Green, our director of internal audit. Tonight, we're here to talk to you, with you about the establishment of an audit committee. Before you, you have a background memo and a draft charter for the audit committee. Bill's going to go through a very short presentation, and we look forward to your feedback.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? The Internal Audit Office has been working with the city manager's office for a while now for developing a plan for creation and rollout of an audit committee. So a really short presentation. At the end, we'll be asking for some council consensus in terms of moving forward. Development of an audit committee relates to council priority number five, financial stability and vitality, specifically performance measure 5.14, which talks to us completing greater than or equal to 90% of the audits that are on our plan. Before I get into the specifics of the audit committee, just a real quick bit of background for context. Over the last six months, the Internal Audit Office has been working to completely revamp our policies and procedures, really from top to bottom. Everything from how we conduct audits, what we pick, how we document them, how we report them, how we follow up, pretty much all aspects of our job. And really, the primary purpose of that has been to create a quality control system that helps us produce work that meets or exceeds audit standards. Actually cleverly referred to in the audit industry as the yellow book, which you can see why. We, so the linkage between what we've been doing and the audit committee is that we view the audit committee as an important part of that quality control structure. So why an audit committee? Why is it important for quality control? There's a few things here that I wanted to highlight. First of all, transparency. We already have pretty good transparency built into our process, but developing a separate body to present and discuss audit topics really kind of takes the transparency to that next level. So things such as deployment of audit resources, findings of internal and external audit reports, status of prior reports, whether or not we're complying with audit standards ourselves. Better auditing. Audit committee also fosters better auditing through additional accountability. Some of the roles of the audit committee would be to make sure that we're doing our work as an audit shop effectively and efficiently, that we're keeping up with, with, keeping pace with industry changes, that we have the proper resources that we need to continue to do our work well and provide good feedback to the city. Improved governance. An audit committee provides really a practical means for the city, a council, to meet its fiduciary responsibility for oversight of the city's financial reporting processes, internal controls, and internal and external audit reports. In addition, helps provide enhanced independence by creating a group separate and apart from those that are typically involved in the audit function to have discussions about findings and information about audits. Lastly, or next, actually correspondingly to that, is an open forum. So these are open meetings, so you can have a conversation about these in an open meeting format, which points back to the transparency issue. Lastly, best practice, publicly traded companies have, are required to have audit committees, and that's been probably since the late 1930s. Many state and local government jurisdictions are required to have audit committees. Many more do have them, even if they're not required because of the benefits that are pointed out here. Steps to implement. I already talked a little bit about the six months of work we've been kind of doing in the background. Tonight is another major step in terms of getting consensus to move forward for the adoption and creation of a committee. The rest are pretty self-explanatory, I won't read them to you. I will point out that dot point number two talks about the adoption of an audit committee charter. That is, there's a draft of that charter in your packet. If you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, it includes information about the committee purpose, authority composition, membership terms, responsibilities, and meetings. And so if you had any feedback or comments or questions on that, I think we're ready to take those now.
Well, thank you, Bill. Thank you for bringing this forward, and we all know Tempe likes to pride itself, ourself, on being open and transparent. And I know that we're always looking room for approval, for improvement. We have a public data portal, we have a budget information that we have accessible online, as was stated earlier tonight, and we also have our audit reports online that, we're even going to get more recent ones, that has been asked for us to make sure that they're online. And I know we can go further. So I'm in support, I like the idea of this audit committee. It fits with everything that we do as a city, and being open and transparent. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I just have a few comments on the audit committee. I think it's a great idea, very supportive of it. I just looked at the composition of it, and I know that, and I looked at some other cities. Glendale has three council members, and the vice mayor serves as the chair. Scottsdale has three council members, three public members, a finance director, and the city manager's non-voting, sits on the committee. Surprise has two council members, three residents, and two department heads. And I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is it says to have the city manager as the chair of the audit committee, and it doesn't look like that's a common practice. And so I would just ask that we would change that and have maybe a member of the public be the chair or someone, someone else. I think it puts Andrew in a really tough position, depending on what's brought forward. And I think it would just be a cleaner process to not have him in that role.
Mayor, Councilmember Adams, thank you for the question. There is no government standards that dictates how the composition should be made. There are opinions one way or the other. Phoenix actually has a structure very similar to this, where the city manager chairs, that's what I have experienced with, it works well. It provides some stability and consistency in terms of leadership of the committee. You mentioned some of the others, and some of those are driven by the reporting structure of the auditor himself or herself. You might have a, Scottsdale, Mesa, you mentioned, those are, those are auditors who report directly to the council. And actually, the audit committee is more of a subcommittee of the council, and it doesn't have citizen membership. So it's a little bit across the board. I think, you know, it is a draft, and I think we're open to more conversation about that. But that is one of the options that's out there.
Councilor Erdano Savage, and I'll follow you.
Sure, no problem. I, I think it's a good idea to move forward with an audit, an audit committee. I will just say I'm a little tired today, because I was at an audit finance committee today for three hours, so I will not be the one volunteering to be on this committee. But I will tell you, and I don't know how the chair thing works, I'm actually the chair of the audit finance committee right now for Valley Metro. And it is, it's really, it's hard work, especially because I don't live and breathe it every day, like a lot of the people with, internally, so I think it's, there's some value to actually having whoever that person is, is probably either, you know, the city manager or deputy city manager, because, I mean, I feel like I'm educating myself every single month that I go to make sure that I'm prepared. But we do have a great Valley Metro team, I'm going to give a great shout out to the Valley Metro Team Tempe, they're pretty awesome, and they really help me, you know, make sure I've got my D's and Q's together. But that consistency, whatever that looks like, I don't know the best method, I'm not sure whoever else, how they do it, but I think asking like a citizen to do that would, it's, it's, it's hard. So I would love it to be somebody that's internally, whether it's the city manager or deputy city manager, whatever that looks like, I think that might be a better choice just because of my personal experience and what some of the challenges I think that we're seeking. But this was pretty clear, I mean, the composition, and I think to be really clear, too, is the authority that the, to really look at what that authority of that committee has, because what happens with the outcomes? I mean, there's recommendations that are brought forward from the audit committee, then, you know, what's the role, I mean, not from the, from the audit itself, the audit committee approves it, and then what's the follow-up? What happens with those outcomes in regards to the recommendations, or, you know, do they have a piece in what that looks like moving forward? Or is that something that needs to happen internally with the staff that still happens on, you know, today? So I, I mean, some of the things, that's kind of what I thought of, but I thought, you know what, it's a draft, it's a first shot at it, I think it's kind of a living, breathing type of thing that we could make adjustments to if we needed to in the near future. But I mean, I think for this is, this is a really great draft, and I will tell you, I, hopefully there's no Valley Metro people here, but this is way more comprehensive than the lesson I got when I became part of the audit finance committee, so it was pretty good.
I just want to, I agree with Councilmember Erdano Savage, and I think the member selection and the term of the board members are really consistent with our current process we have now. So it's consistent with our boards and commissions and how we do it, and I, I'm fine, I'm, to start with, I'm fine with what is being presented with the city manager as a chair. Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Adams?
Yes, and not to beat a dead horse, but according to the Governmental Finance Officers Association, it reads as follows: "To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no governing body member who exercises managerial responsibilities that fall within the scope of the audit should serve as a member of the audit committee." So that's a best practice as, as, according to the Governmental Finance Officers Association.
I, I respect that. I'm just saying, and as Councilmember Erdano Savage mentioned, and in my experience on audit with Valley Metro, and I, I gave it, and I handed it off to Councilmember Erdano Savage.
Thank you.
I would tell you, making sure that someone understands the process and have that consistency, and I think is so, so important, because there is a learning curve. If you're not familiar with the city budget and the process and how that works, I think this is a good thing to try, to start out with. It doesn't mean that we can't change it in the future if some, some issues do arise, but I think this is a good starting platform.
Vice Mayor.
And I agree with the mayor, I think it should be the city manager, or if the, the city manager, the deputy, deputy city managers decide that it's one of the three of them, but I think it should be at the highest level, because they have the most extensive knowledge of all of the departments and all the players, and I think that's the most effective way. So I, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. It's great.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And Councilmember Adams, I just wanted to respond to, you're right, that is a GFO recommended practice. I've been in this business for a long time, about 30 years, and I think you have to take those things and, and really adapt them to what works best for your organization, your culture. A lot of times, it comes down to people executing. So no matter the structure that you have, a start is, you put a structure out there, if it seems best for the organization, you go, go with it, and if there's changes that are needed, then those can be addressed later on.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, just as a point of clarification, as recommended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item, future agenda items? Anybody have anything? I, for a future agenda item for the next work study, if, I'll get some information with some research on prevailing wage, I'm going to work with Councilmember Navarro and Councilmember Keating, bring it forward. Anybody else have any future agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Seeing none? The next item on our agenda is a call to the audience for the committee as a whole. We don't have any, but because it is getting late, well, we started, I do have one person, but it's not on the agenda, it's okay if we have Lydia speak, because I know she's been waiting. I kind of think I know what it's going to be about, but you could please come forward and state your name, because, state your name and place of residence for the record, and then we're doing this separately. So normally, we wouldn't do this, but you.
Thank you so much.
There's only two residents here right now, or not, I mean, two non-city staff or city-related residents here. There's a lot of residents here, but.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell, and members of the city council, for this opportunity to speak. I was hoping to come in a little earlier, but I was delayed in traffic. My name is Lydia Guzman, and I am with Chicanos por la Causa. I am the Director of Advocacy and Civic Engagement, and I'd like to say a few words on the recommendation to move forward with the, the, the Dolores Huerta Day to honor Dolores Huerta. And I also would like to state that I'm also a resident of the city of Tempe. I just moved here just a few months ago, so.
City of choice.
I love the city, so. But let me just say that, as, as a resident, I'm very proud that the city council is considering honoring the legacy and recognizing the work and the life work of such a remarkable, amazing woman, Dolores Huerta. I've had the honor and the privilege of working with Dolores Huerta on a variety of different projects throughout the scope of my many years of advocacy. And, and I'm so glad to hear the presentation, you know, before I had this opportunity to speak, because the, the term, Sis Puede, is a term that, yes, indeed, she did coin, and she was a firm believer in, you know, collective, you know, collective work, that together we can accomplish a lot. And so, having worked with her, she knew that there was strength in numbers. And so, in, in working with her, she also, you know, she says, this is not just something for the Latino community, but this is something that our communities across the board can work together and accomplish things. And so, knowing that this is something that the city of Tempe, when honoring her work, especially her legacy, whether it's through a, a day of action, I think it comes in perfect timing. timing. Her birthday in April comes at the time when we're going to also open up the census count. And she's also a very firm believer in civic engagement. And one of the hard-to-count communities is a community that she has been a very vocal, vocal supporter to ensuring that there is a political and perfect civic participation. And a perfect way to do this would be through engaging folks, especially those hard-to-count communities, through the census. And I just gave my card to the young lady who gave the presentation and said, I, on behalf of Chicanos por la Causa, commit to working with you to ensuring that not only, you know, on, on the census, to making sure that our, our communities are counted, but also to see how we can work collaboratively, to work forward and bring some ideas on honoring Dolores Suerta for, for her life's work and legacy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
So we're going to be contacted, just so you know.
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, committee of the whole items, we do not have any. Anybody have any updates on items in progress? Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call up Kristen Nguyen, council aide to the animal welfare group upon which Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Keating and I serve. And there's been some developments with our TNR pilot program, and I thought you could give us a quick update.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and council. Kristen Nguyen, council aide and staff facilitator for the animal welfare working group. And I'm here to give you a 90-day update on the working group. So in the previous 90 days, we've been working to get the feral cat pilot program up and running. It actually began over the summer with a survey that was placed on the Tempe Forum, surveyed our residents citywide about potential cat issues in their neighborhood, gathering information on where the problem areas were. And from those results, we selected four specific neighborhoods, Pepperwood, Kiwanis, Brentwood Cavalier, and Tempe Gardens slash Superstition. And they were chosen not only because of the number of responses from those neighborhoods, but also the number of responses that reported, yes, we have a problem, and yes, we'd like to help do something about it. So those four neighborhoods were selected for the pilot program. The pilot launched officially last week, as each neighborhood has been scheduled for a community education meeting, where they're given a lot of information on nationally-recognized best practices for cat colony management and ways to minimize negative impacts on their neighborhood. So we've now completed three of those four meetings, and we have one more next week. So far, we've actually seen that the information is being received with a lot of enthusiasm from the residents, so that's nice to see. Going forward, our pilot neighborhoods will receive ongoing support in implementing some new tactics, organizing their neighborhood volunteers, and communicating with the rest of the residents in their neighborhoods about what's happening. When they're ready, each neighborhood will be connected to one of our rescue partners to provide trap neuter return TNR services for all of the cats in their neighborhood in the various colonies at the same time. And those services are being funded by a generous donation from a resident that was earmarked specifically for TNR purposes. So we're, so we're using that money.
Good question.
Most importantly, our staff has created a pre-programmed survey to document sort of the baseline of what issues we have in each neighborhood now and the, and what they're experiencing with the cats. And then there will be a post-programmed survey where we'll be able to compare our results and have a much better idea of, of whether or not we've created any improvement and be able to demonstrate that in a measurable way. So the plan is hopefully for the working group to then take those results and determine what, if any, recommendations they would then want to make about a citywide program, depending on how this works. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
I just want to say your expertise has been invaluable, and the way you can communicate as well, just the complex curriculum of feral cat management. So thank you so much. I'm excited to see this project get launched.
Come to the meeting next week. All right, yes, right, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Joel Navarro and myself would like to call up Tim Gomez to give a report on a committee that we've been working on. So come on up, Tim. No, we're just kidding.
That was a major cycle.
He perked up pretty quick.
And he was going to go with it. He has something.
He did, he'll wing it. All right. Anybody else have any updates?
I'm good.
All right. With that, Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ian Johnston from Tempe Leadership Class 35 for being here throughout the entire meeting and foreshadowing me all day. It was a real pleasure to get to know Ian better.